Okay, Mayor, we are ready to go for the October 27th, 2020 council meeting. Here on mute.
Of course I am. Great way to start. Good evening, everybody. Adequate notice of this meeting, as required by the Open Public Meetings Act, was provided through the posting, mailing, and filing of the annual notice of regularly scheduled meetings of the Town Council on December 11th, 2019. The notice was on that date, posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, provided to the Westfield leader and the Star Ledger, and filed with the clerk of the Town of Westfield. Mrs. Rowley, may I have a roll call?
Mayor Brendel?
Here.
Council members have good?
Here.
Harmley?
Here.
LaGrippo?
Here.
Katz?
Here.
Aki?
Here.
Contract?
Here.
Tardia?
Here.
Voice?
Here.
Now, can I ask everybody to stand for a salute to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So, um, so Jim, before...
Couple of quick updates tonight, Mayor. Thank you. First, quickly on road paving. Our, our last job this year, Scotch Plains Avenue, the state aid job that started yesterday. They are doing ADA compliant ramps along the stretch of Scotch Plains Avenue. That goes from South Avenue. Is it, is it to Dorian? Chris, I think it's to Dorian, right?
Dorian Road, correct.
Okay, so that's the state aid project this year. So ADA rams this week and probably into next week, based upon the weather forecast for later this week. And then there'll be a couple, a couple of days of milling and a couple of days of paving. So we're hoping to get it in the next two to three weeks, but that, that started yesterday. Leaf collection is scheduled to start next week. Again, leaves are falling, and usually the first pass is a little quicker than the second pass, a little, little lighter. Couple of things to remember. We do have leaf bags available at our conservation center. We've gone through one pallet of bags already. People are coming to get their free bags. And for those first 100 people that come and ask for leaf shoots, we will give those out for free as well. That makes the leaves getting into the bags easier for those that want to bag leaves. That's working well. You can track the crews starting next week, where they're going to be in your neighborhood, website, social media outlets, as well as the Westfield Connect app and town updates. That'll be done daily. And also, we are starting next week in Councilman Contract, I know, has a public works update later on, but it's important, it's tied to leaf season a little bit, a pumpkin program, which I guess you can, you'll, he'll be talking about later on, but trying to keep pumpkins out of the leaf piles. So we're going to have a one-week pumpkin program at the center, which Councilman can talk about a little later. And the last thing about leaf collection, just a reminder to residents, no branches, no pumpkins, no hay bales, and no mums in the leaf piles, and no pumpkins. We're trying to keep the debris out of there. Remember, when Public Works picks up the leaves in the street, while the leaves are gone from your neighborhood, our process really only starts. So we have to bring the, the leaves. Sometimes we bring them to our center. Sometimes we bring them right to the county facility. If there's other debris besides leaves in there, our, our loads could get rejected and have to return to the center, which actually causes a storage problem for us. So again, no branches, no mums, no hay bale, pumpkins in the, in the leaf piles. Two other updates, Mayor. We have a Sycamore Playground. We do expect delivery of the new playground equipment. Looks like right now is November 6th, so we are, are going to start this week to prepare the area, to start removing the old playground equipment, so that can be removed, and then the area can be prepared. Once the equipment comes in, the installing company will be in, probably shortly thereafter, it, it gets delivered to begin the pouring, the footings and the installation of that, of that playground. So we're excited about that. It's, you know, the weather is a little tough this time of year, but we're excited to get the old playground out and get the new playground in. So I know that'll be partnered, once we get the details together and have exact dates, the Terry DeFalco group that's been working on a memorial to her will file after that, that happens. So that's exciting. So hopefully they'll see some action there this week of removal of the playground equipment, and then a week or two later, starting of the installation. And lastly, just want to mention, this time of year, we always, the state of New Jersey requires all municipalities in the state to file what they call best practices inventory, which asks every municipality in the state to answer a range of questions to confirm that you're following best practices in, in both financial and core competencies of what towns need to do and have to do. Happy to report, we'll be refiling ours this week as per the deadline, and we have a very excellent score, only missed one point in the, in the survey. And the state also asks other questions that are not scored about information from each town to help them understand what we need, how they can provide better grants or shared service opportunities for us. So again, very proud to submit the best practice checklist again this year, and, and I want to thank the finance office staff, particularly helping with this this year. It's a, it's a small, it's a, it's a large undertaking, but we'll be submitting it this week to comply with the state guidelines. So those are the quick updates, Mayor. I'll ask it back to you.
Excellent. Yeah, all good things.
Yeah.
Tonight, I'm actually going to forego my typical long COVID update to focus on a piece of business that we are introducing tonight, which I'll talk about in just a second. But I did want to give three, I just hit on a couple of points. The, this COVID update will be put on social media and will be sent, so you, you can catch up separately, but just in terms of COVID numbers, and we are all familiar with this spike that's happening across the state, that's certainly happening in our community. Since my last update on Friday, we have eight new cases, a zero on Saturday, three on Sunday, one on Monday, and four today. Our total is 430 since we first reported in March, and it is a troubling trend, and, you know, we all need to do our best to mitigate it. On the voting front, as of yesterday, Westfield has returned 10,894 ballots, as 44% of registered voters, and I just want to strongly, strongly encourage everybody to ideally not wait till Election Day next week to vote. The lines could be long. As a reminder, if you go, it's not, it's not machine ballot, ballots, it is a provisional ballot, and they are the last to be counted and don't start getting counted until November 9th, after all the mail-in ballots have been counted. So I would just strongly urge everybody to, to drop your ballots off. You know, the, the drop out, the drop-off box in front of the clerk's office is very easy. It's under 24-hour surveillance. It's empty daily, which is a very easy thing and convenient thing to do. So, so I hope that we can get way past that 44% number before Tuesday. And lastly, just about Halloween. Lastly, about Halloween...
November 9th, I think it came out November 3rd.
No, no. Mail-in ballots can get, can get counted up until November 9th. They have to be postmarked by November 3rd.
Okay.
And so provisional ballots don't get counted until after that date. So they are very late and very last. They'll still be counted, but I just want to encourage everybody to, to try and get their ballots in before Tuesday, ideally. Regarding Halloween, I just, you know, I just remind everybody, there's guidelines up on the website. I am worried because of the COVID increases about safety and health of our community. It is a Saturday night. I know there's going to be a lot of temptations for gatherings and get-togethers, but strongly discourage that if possible. We've also included a printable sign on the website that you can hang on your door or put in your window, if you choose not to hand out treats. I think everybody will understand if you're not comfortable. So please, please, please really be careful this weekend about, you know, mitigating spread in our community. But tonight, I really wanted to spend the bulk of our time addressing an ordinance that we're introducing tonight. We are taking a giant leap forward towards fulfilling our commitment to revitalize our downtown and reimagine Westfield's future by introducing an ordinance to adopt a redevelopment plan for our recently designated downtown properties. Now, I want to take a few minutes to recap the steps we've taken to bring us to this important point, and I want to be very clear and ensure that the community has the facts about what's happening. In recent months, we have designated for redevelopment the Lord &amp; Taylor Properties, and that's to both the property where the store sits, as well as the two parking lots across the street, our eight municipal parking lots in the Rialto Building. These properties comprise 20 acres, all located within our downtown. This has been an unprecedented planning accomplishment, for which I would like to thank our town planner, Don Sammet, along with our redevelopment team, including legal counsel Bob Goldsmith and Steve Wannick, planners Phil Abramson and Chris Colley from Topology, economic development advisor Liz Jeffrey, our town administrator Jim Gildea, and our town attorney Tom Jardy. I'd also like to thank this council for supporting a shared vision of progress, and our planning board, led by Chairman Robert Newell, for adopting the master plan reexamination report last year, as well as to our residents for their input and participation in that process, which laid the groundwork for where we are today. As I have said repeatedly, in order to create and maintain a vibrant downtown, it is essential to have people living, working, dining, and shopping there. Now more than ever, those activities are critical to retaining and supporting our existing businesses, while also attracting new ones to occupy vacant storefronts. And based upon the input we receive from residents as part of the master plan process, you agree? And I just want to tell you, remind you a little bit about what we heard from you. So 75% of respondents to our master plan surveys agreed that the town should encourage redevelopment and the attraction of major employers, particularly in high-tech industries. 67% viewed new office, retail, or mixed use in the downtown very favorably. Parking in the downtown ranked as the third most important issue affecting Westfield. Additionally, 70% of respondents said that our downtown was one of the main reasons they chose to live here. To that end, the master plan reexamination report, which is really the town's guide for future development, includes the following recommendations to ensure the long-term vibrancy of our downtown. It's, it recommended to support appropriately scaled mixed-use development on underutilized properties, such as municipal parking lots. Establish a parking plan that integrates community-structured parking into future development. Consider the creation of high-tech and medical wellness office space to introduce new tax ratables. Connect the north and south side of our commercial downtown. Prioritize the creation of public community gathering spaces. Embrace and showcase arts and culture, and create and implement a streetscape improvement plan, which includes sidewalks, lighting signage, and landscaping. And these recommendations echo what we see happening in surrounding towns that are far along in the redevelopment initiatives, which is the reason many have surpassed Westfield and their downtown occupancy rates and transformations. Summit now, in the process of transforming approximately 10 acres adjacent to their train station, this project is anticipated to produce at least 150 new diverse housing units, additional parking, 50,000 square feet of retail space, and significant pockets of open space. Crawford recently designated another two acres in their downtown for their fourth downtown redevelopment project to make way for additional mixed-use projects. Their initial project, which was completed in 2005, included apartments, retail space, and parking, which sparked the transformation of their downtown. Scotch Plains recently designated their entire downtown as a redevelopment area, and plans on relocating their municipal building in order to build a new state-of-the-art library and mixed-use projects in its place. Fanwood is in the midst of their second redevelopment project and continues to enjoy a 95% retail occupancy rate in their initial development site. Now, what is proposed in other towns will not dictate what we pursue in Westfield, as we prioritize a plan that will be specific to our unique needs, and one that also considers post-pandemic lifestyle changes. However, it's important to note that all of these projects are currently underway during this pandemic, because these neighborhood communities know, as I do, that we cannot afford to wait. As the future of brick-and-mortar retail continues to shift, our downtown success must rely on a model that supports a wider variety of professional services, residential options, mixed-use buildings, and public spaces, as well as evolving commuting and work-from-home patterns. Our future prosperity will not be driven by controlling the rental prices in a free marketplace, but instead by growing and diversifying our tax base. This will bring the added advantage of decreasing our overreliance on residential property taxes, which at 90% of our tax collections is the highest in Union County. The lack of a broad commercial tax base makes it difficult to maintain and enhance existing services without overburdening our residential taxpayers. Our list of needs is long. A $45 million long-term park, long-term parks plan to give us the parks and recreational facilities we deserve. A new firehouse to replace the one that no longer meets current safety standards. A community center to meet the needs of both teens and seniors. New sidewalks, enhanced street lighting, expansive road repaving, and upgraded infrastructure for sewage and stormwater management, to name just a few priorities. In the absence of new significant revenue streams, the ability to deliver these services will always be limited. Conversely, towns that are fortunate enough to attract new investment and development have the means to deliver needed upgrades and improvements, as well as quality of life amenities that residents expect and deserve. Using redevelopment law and tax abatements proactively to drive economic progress and fiscal health is both smart and necessary. In addition to our neighboring towns, we've seen it done in Morristown, Montclair, Red Bank, and Princeton, to name just a few. Indeed, Westfield is actually one of the few Main Street communities that hasn't taken advantage of redevelopment incentives, and we have suffered as a result. So how do we get there from here? Tonight, we are introducing a redevelopment plan for our designated properties, which will invite and inform development proposals. On November 2nd, this Monday, this ordinance will go to the planning board for their review before a final expected council vote on November 10th. So what is the redevelopment plan we are introducing tonight? It's simply a framework to explain what type of investment the town is seeking on these properties, based upon the master plan reexamine, examination recommendations, and it paves the way for us to collaborate with commercial property owners, investors, and developers, on meeting our mutual goals. Any and all future proposals must not only be compliant with the master plan and be supported by circulation and traffic studies, but it also must include robust public input. I assure you, your voice will be critical to ensuring the best outcome for our community. It is now time for Westfield to lead with confidence and reaffirm its reputation as one of the premier communities and most vibrant downtowns in the state. We must embrace the opportunity in front of us, because doing nothing is irresponsible and economically self-destructive. As always, there will be those who will be vocal about resisting change, but decrying change and lamenting the state of our downtown are indeed mutually exclusive. I have always said that great towns don't just happen. They are built with purpose and with passion by people from all walks of life. They are the consequence of key decisions taken at critical times in the life of the town by people of vision. It is now time for us to leave, and with your input and support, together, we will make Westfield a national model for a post-COVID 21st century community. So with that, is the setup for the ordinance that we'll be introducing later tonight, and we can move on to the business at hand. So, Ms. Rowley, may I have a motion to approve the minutes from the Town Council Executive Session and Regular Meeting of October 13th, 2020?
So moved.
Motion by Councilwoman LaGrippo, second?
Second, contract.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried. Mrs. Rowley, do we have any petitions or communications?
No, Mayor, we do not.
So now it's time for open discussion by citizens. You can please virtually raise your hand, make your comment on any subject on which we have jurisdiction, and be sure to state your name and address for the record. And, and I just remind everybody, this is public comment, so we'll take your comments, and then we, if you have any questions, we'll do our best to answer them once the public comment session, session is closed.
Hey, Mayor, our first person wants to talk is Mr. Blake, John Blake. Mr. Blake, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Go ahead, name and address, please.
John Blake, 809 Carlton Road.
Thank you.
At the last council meeting, I asked a few questions concerning a set of expensive custom wheels used on the former police chief's automobile. None of the questions were aimed at employee conduct or discipline by the town. I realize the subject of the interaction of the town and employees involve confidentiality at times. My questions had to do with the wheels, worth thousands when they were purchased, and the care that surrounded them when they came into the DPW. And whether or not the prosecutor was notified that they were now, now, no longer in the possession of the town. During the matter of Mr. Wayman's severance from the Westfield employment, the mayor had no difficulty commenting on the fact that the matter was in the prosecutor's hands. Therefore, referral to the prosecutor is not a confidential matter. What the prosecutor says later on, maybe. When I asked about any reference to the prosecutor's office of a claim of theft of the wheels, the answer would breach no more confidentiality than about Mr. Wayman. It is my understanding that the wheels previously on the vehicle of a DP employee, DPW employee, have now been returned to the town's possession. And do you find it confidential to answer if those, those wheels can be found on the municipal auction block, or whether or not that is considered confidential? And if they're not on the block, has there been some paper entry as to their existence in the possession of the town? Since it does not involve any infraction of an employee, will you let us know, as I asked last meeting, if the town was, has had a paper trail of possession of the wheels by the DPW, and how the possession thereof changed? I asked if they were sold or given. I asked who is reasonably, pardon me, who is responsible for the transfer. None of that had to do with employee discipline. I didn't even ask you his name. You, however, have continued the traditional habit of the mayor of Westfield, going back for years. The ordinance says that the public may comment. Each has five minutes. When the last speaker is finished, or when the question has been completed, pardon me, the questioner has completed his five minutes, the mayor or administrator then answers an embarrassing question by saying they are bound by confidentiality. At that point, the person asking the question, in this case me, is unable to contradict or to object, or to point out that the area he's talking about is not confidential. I asked you non-confidential questions, non-employee questions. They were aimed at the possession of the wheels, their whereabouts, and who at the DPW was charged with their protection. I asked if they were stolen. Did you refer the matter to the prosecutor? I asked if they were not stolen. How did they end up on an employee's vehicle? None of the above is confidential. The existence of the wheels is basically an irrelevancy. Money being spent, a few thousand dollars on a set of wheels, is not a big deal. What is really a big deal is that you and your council have elected, probably were elected, on vows of openness and candidness. You keep yelling transparency. In the Wayman matter, you insisted on a confidentiality clause, as Westfield always does, when it settles a matter with a departing employee who knows too much. My lengthy comment tonight is not due to my concern about how a chief of police was allowed to have such an expensive set of wheels. It's not about the obvious failure of the town to have a paper trail when the wheels were given back to the DPW. My complaint is your claim of openness and transparency when you do the same thing mayors have done for years, and hide behind the confidentiality you create and the insulting manner you blithely offer the excuse rather than live up to your own election promises. May I follow that up with just one question, which you might want to answer? Are you willing to waive any confidentiality agreement on behalf of the Town of Westfield? And are you willing to ask, or probably to make sure, that in the future, no confidentiality agreement will be entered into by the town, so that we don't end up looking as stupid as Mountainside did recently concerning their police department problems, where they ended up, their insurance company paying two and a half million dollars, and then paying about a million and three-quarters in attorney's fees? The idea that the town enters into confidentiality agreements, yet the leaders of the town claim they want to have transparency in government is somewhat contradictory. So that is my question at the moment. Sorry it took so long. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. The, we have another person here, Yonatan Greenstein. Is that, if I had that right?
Thank you. It's Yonatan Greenstein.
Sorry, sorry about that. Address, please.
665 Carlton Road.
Go ahead, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. My name's Yonatan Greenstein. I'm a pulmonologist and critical care physician. Some of you may have read a piece that I wrote two days ago that was put in Tap Into Westfield. It's a piece where I raise concern about inadequate definition of a close contact and the resultant way that contact tracing is being held in the school district. I'm writing because despite my phone calls and emails to the Health Department, the Westfield Regional Health Department, I have not gotten a single response to any of my questions. I emailed with the principal of Lincoln, and I emailed with the superintendent of the Westfield School District, who both told me that the answers to my questions were ones that the Health Department only could answer. I'm concerned that the way things are being handled is putting not only our children at risk, but is also putting their families at risk and those that families are put in contact with. And so I ask you, Mayor, and the Town Council, how may I proceed to make sure that what I'm concerned about is heard and that a conversation can be had about it? Because right now, it feels like my concern has been put off into a wastebasket and is being ignored.
There, I'm mute.
So, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Dr. Greenstein, and, and I'll certainly address it when we close our public comment.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else want to be heard? Anybody else? We have Mr. Greg Casco. Casco, are you there?
Good evening. Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead. Address, please.
434 Everson Place.
Right.
Um, I have a question regarding the recent uptick in COVID cases here in town. Unfortunately, tonight, Mayor Brendel, you were unable, or you decided not to provide an extensive update. While I do follow the updates that you put out on Facebook and online, my concern is that, it's my understanding that eight people from the DPW are now in quarantine. I'm wondering how that's going to affect the DPW in the upcoming weeks with the leaf season upon us. And to segue into the leaf pickup issue, each year, I've, I've addressed the council on this topic, and I do follow when... And I do follow when the DPW is going to be in my neighborhood. And last year, when I was following the updates, they said the DPW is going to be in your neighborhood this week. I then went outside the next day and I took the half pile of leaves that had fallen and I took them out to the curb and I placed them there only to find out that the DPW had been down my street the day before. So those leaves ended up staying there. I ended up building a bigger pile when the remaining leaves had fallen and the DPW came by eventually for the second pickup and picked up that pile. I know in years gone by, past administrations, there's sometimes been three pickups. So I'm just wondering, you know, it's early. I don't have a lot of leaves down in my yard yet. And if my neighborhood is getting picked up in the next week or two, I don't know yet because I have to look at the updates. Will those leaves that are put out to the curb after that second pickup, will they be picked up with a possible third pickup by the town? So if you could address me on that, as well as, like I said, my initial question regarding the uptick in COVID cases, especially the DPW and the DPW employees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to be heard? Anyone else? Okay, Mr. West, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Address, please.
Yes, 663 Summit Avenue, Bill West. I actually wasn't going to be speaking tonight, but when I heard that the redevelopment ordinance was being presented just 15 minutes ago, I felt that I should at least speak up and just maybe clarify, and I'm sure, Mayor Brindle, you may clarify after I speak. But I think to characterize the desires of the population that they want to revitalize downtown includes designating the entire downtown as in need of redevelopment. I think it's a stretch. I think a lot of the questions answered from the master plan reexamination survey, I think you can pick and choose areas that the population want or don't want. But a lot of the questions, in my interpretation, the results is that the town wanted to maintain, or the populace wanted to maintain the downtown character. And I think designating the entire area as in need of redevelopment may jeopardize that. So that's a concern I have. And I also think that the survey, the residents spoke up about, you know, the impact on schools, the increase in traffic and the like that might come with a redevelopment with, you know, building more townhouses and apartments and condos. So, you know, I do appreciate the effort to obviously revitalize downtown. I just think it has to be measured in terms of the risk of overpopulation, traffic, and keeping the character of downtown. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. West. Anyone else want to be heard? Anybody else? Sean, I'm mayor. You may close the public hearing.
Sean, I close this portion of public comments. And I'll just address a few, and then Jim, I'm going to hand it off to you and potentially Tom to answer some of these other ones. So for Mr. West, who just came up about redevelopment. So I just want to be clear, just because we designated all of those properties does not necessarily mean that's where we'll be developing. As we've said all along, one of the intentions of designating all the parking lots, along with the Lord &amp; Taylor properties, it gives us the opportunity to look at things very holistically and determine what might make, it just gives us a larger chessboard. It doesn't necessarily mean that that's where it will all be developed. And then the other part that you mentioned about some of your concerns, and that's one of the things I mentioned upfront, is about a very, very robust public input process will be a component of any development we go in forward. So any concerns, the ones that you might have just brought up or others might have, there'll be plenty of opportunity to weigh in on this. So I just want to be very clear about that, that the redevelopment plan is really just a toolbox. It's like an instruction kit to get developers thinking about the art of the possible. And once you have a developer on board, you collaborate with them to figure out what makes sense where. And that would be the next step, and that's not going to be done without, as I said, the appropriate traffic studies and input from the public. So I think we're very much aligned in that. And Dr. Greenstein, I will follow up with Megan Avalon tomorrow, our regional health director. As you know, they service eight separate municipalities, and I know that, you know, especially with this big uptick in cases across the board, they've been dealing with a lot of different things in all these towns, and schools are a big component of that. So I'm sure there's no intentional slight in not returning your call. If that's indeed the case, I just think it's a matter of them trying to stem the tide of this, what looks like is a significant uptake in cases. But I'll follow up with Megan tomorrow and ask if she can get back to you quickly. And regarding the questions from Mr. Casco and Mr. Blake, I think I'm going to defer to you, Jim, on maybe some of Mr. Casco's questions. And then John Blake, I think it's probably between you and maybe, I think he mentioned Tom Sharding too. So with that on hand.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll just address Mr. Casco's concerns. And yes, we have, we have one DPW employee testing positive last week, another one just tested positive today. And because of that, some other employees were actually asked to quarantine out of abundance of caution. So we are going to have a few less people as we start leaf collection next week. Good news is no one's symptomatic right now, the ones are quarantining. So we hope that that's going to be the case as we go through some next couple of days. But in reference to leaf collection, historically, obviously, Mr. Casco, you live on a, on a street right by a school. So school streets do sometimes go out of sequence because of access to the street due to parking in the street. We sometimes do Saturdays or days where schools are closed, which does happen out of sequence. This year, it might be interesting, though, it might be different because we've found so far that while schools are, you know, the hybrid model, we're having, we should have some more access to these streets during the day than we've had in the past due to the hybrid model. So yeah, do what you've been doing, track the crews. And we're going to try to pay particular attention to schools this year because we have more access during the week. And I guess I'll ask Tom, if you want to respond, Mr. Blake? I can't hear you. Can't hear you, Tom.
It's got a loud and dry.
Yeah, right. My phones. Sometimes it's headphones.
Hey, Jim, just while Tom's looking into that, where on the website can you find the, will you be able to find where the road crews are going to be, where the cleanup crews are going to be to pick up the leaves?
Sure. Every day, the Public Works Department updates where the crews are and also, which is the streets where they are and where they're expected to be the next few days. We also have that information pushed out if you sign up for town updates, as well as our Westfield Connect app and on social media. So it's a different places, but on the website, it's under the, we actually put on the carousel on the front page, actually. So it's easy to find on the front page, but there's multiple ways to get it. I would encourage anybody, it's a great question, councilman, to sign up for the updates and sign up for our Westfield Connect app. It's a great way to have it pushed to you rather than have to search for it.
Yeah, and Jim, we can confirm that the plan is three leaf pickups. That was another one of Mr. Casco's questions.
That's right. Yeah, and actually, that's right. Two pickups is what's always, every year is different, depending on how the leaves fall, when they fall, weather issues. We usually do three pickups a year. Two pickups would pick up the bulk of it. There's usually a third final pass. Some years, you've even done four pickups, but that's, you know, every year is different with weather. But yeah, usually, councilman contract's correct. We try to do three pickups. We'll try to do that this year as well.
Jim, real quick, the people I saw have debris in the streets from the August 2nd tropical storm. Is the DPW going to pick up that debris or?
Actually, we have, there's, we've given notices out to many, many homeowners over the course of the past month or so. Thankfully, most homeowners have taken care of the debris that was left over from the storm. The few that have not, that debris will obviously continue to remain in the street. Obviously, the heavy branches that are not from town trees, and those residents should have been notified of that. And so, and again, as I mentioned earlier, no branches, no mums, no hay bales, no pumpkins and leaf piles will have to go around. We don't want our loads to be rejected from the county, which makes more burden and more cost for us. So, but we've got a door knocker program. We handed out quite a few of those, and most people comply. So I want to thank those residents for complying.
Is that working now?
Yeah, you raised your microphone a bit, Tom, but yeah, I can hear you better now.
Okay, I don't know if I missed anything. So I don't know if you answered Mr. Blake's question, but I will if you didn't.
I didn't yet, no.
Okay. Sorry about that, mayor. Yeah, I just want, in response to Mr. Blake's question, he's right that a report was made to the town, I believe to the mayor, alleging misconduct. And what the town can say, what I can say, is that the matter was investigated and action was taken. It's concluded now. It's a personnel issue, obviously, and it was addressed appropriately, given the facts, both through Labor Council and in conjunction with the union and Mr. Gilday's office. So I personally am fully satisfied that the matter was handled properly, both in terms of the investigation itself and the actions that were taken as a result of that investigation. With respect to the facts of the matter, you know, as it turns out, on most of the questions that you asked with respect to the facts have already been answered on Mr. Casco's anonymous blog of the same name, the facts of the matter. So you can go there if you want to find out some of the questions that you asked, the answers to some of the questions that you asked with respect to the facts. And with respect to whether the town's willing to waive confidentiality, that's something that I certainly would recommend against, although it's, as you know, as an attorney, Mr. Blake, it's certainly the town's prerogative to do so. But there are considerations that are unique to a situation involving personnel matters and involving union relations. And so, of course, as you know, there is a statute in New Jersey, the Open Public Records Act request. And of course, as you probably further know, the belt division of the Superior Court has determined that settlement agreements of lawsuits, including releases, are no longer exempt from production under Oprah. That has not so far been extended to the results of grievances. So that would be exempt under Oprah as well. And related to that, yes, the question if there was a paper trail. This is municipal government, of course, there's a paper trail, not inviting you to make an open request, but of course, the town complies with the Open Public Records Act. And if a request is made, the town will comply and produce whatever records are not exempt, are not attorney-client privileged, and are not otherwise privileged from production. So that's, that, to me, would be an answer to your question. I would say, given the nature of the sensitivity of personnel matters, particularly when you're dealing with representative employees and potential employee discipline, that's not something that the town is going to put out far and wide voluntarily. Mayor, now you're muted, mayor.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, so I think now we can move on to the bills and claims. Councilman Hapgood.
Thank you, mayor. I would like to move bills and claims in the amount of $299,563.64.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
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 Opposed? This motion is carried. Next on the agenda is reports of standing committees. Begin with the Finance Policy Committee. Councilman Hapgood.
Thank you again, mayor. I have eight resolutions, which I'd like to move as a package. And I just wanted to note, the last two resolutions relate to us increasing the payment threshold on our contracts for redevelopment legal and planning professionals. And I just want to note that those increases are expected to be reimbursed by designated developers and will have a minimal ultimate impact on our budgets in town. So I'll start at the beginning. A resolution authorizing the CFO to draw a warrant for unused parking permit fee. A resolution authorizing the CFO to draw a warrant for overpaid taxes in 2020. A resolution authorizing the CFO to draw warrants for the 2019, 2020 pursuant to the Tax Court of New Jersey. A resolution authorizing, I'm sorry, a resolution requesting permission for the dedication by rider for accumulated absences liability trust fund. A resolution authorizing approval of application for municipal alliance grant. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a reimbursement agreement with the County of Union for the CARES Act. A resolution to amend the contract award for the redevelopment legal services. And finally, a resolution to amend the contract award for redevelopment planning services.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, just real quick, as far as the redevelopment costs, do we have an idea how much? I know you said it's going to get reimbursed, but the ink's not even dry on the ordinance. But we have an idea why that's the increase now?
So this is work, councilman, that's been going on really since the beginning of the year. So, you know, it's, it's just that there's been, you know, a greater amount of work that's been required by both of those parties to take this process forward. But the general practice is that towns will budget for these services. And then, once you get into the redevelopment process, the developer then takes responsibility for those and reimburses for back fees and also covers those fees going forward.
Okay, now it's just the ordinance just passed and we're already receiving an increase. That's my concern.
It didn't work. I think just to expand on what Linda said. So again, the firms that have done the work, we anticipated work. These are word of contracts originally done in January and February. And of course, we've had a lot of work going on, some of which we've discussed previously as a council about development that's happening on pre-approved projects. Things are in discussion, as the mayor has mentioned, in many meetings. So this is really to make sure that we have their proper amounts reserved. But as Councilman Habbiad said, it looks like the hope is that, once we get to some conclusions with the one project that's been in the queue for a while up down on South Avenue over there, that some of these costs would be reimbursed and then much more of it. So both for the planning work and the redevelopment legal work, and that's pretty common practice. We just have to, local public contracts law requires, we have to increase these thresholds. And then, again, we look to get money back by year end or even early next year.
Okay, we have, we have no idea how much we would get back, though.
Actually, it's a lot more of the legal services and maybe a little less of the planning member. A lot of the planning work done this year by our redevelopment planner, Don Sam is done a phenomenal job internally. A lot of the work has directly related to redevelopment. It's been to the five-year tax abatements we've created for the, they related to store preservation. So that's worth the town would have done anyway, that we wouldn't be able to get done if we didn't have a planner to do that. So some will get back from the planner, some will be stuff we've directed them to. One other thing, just while we're on this topic, just big picture of the finance resolutions. I forgot to mention early on that one of the resolutions that we have introduced or on the, or reimbursement for the CARES Act through the county. So just an FYI, you see on there, that's a not-to-exceed price of $279. Included in there is the things you might expect, you know, play the purchase of Plexiglas and PPE that we've done through all the departments and so forth. But also, we've included other items and projects we're doing, such as But also we've included other, other items and projects we're doing such as, um, the design work of the upgrade of the council chambers, for example, in a post-COVID world, we want to make sure the council gets technology upgrades that actually can only, only serve every board and commission, but also service in the, in the COVID world we're in. Uh, other things like that. So that's something we're submitting. We'll have a lot of documents being submitted to them. Um, after, uh, this is adopted tonight and then, uh, we hope to reimburse them from the county, um, by year's end.
Hey, thanks. This is, uh, it's costing us money to give away, give away money with tax abatements, but, uh, um, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, okay. All in favor? Yes.
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 Opposed?
Um, ma'am, opposed on items, uh, seven and eight regarding the, uh, additional redevelopment costs.
Uh, okay. Uh, uh, great. This motion is carried. So next is the Code Review and Town Property Committee, Councilor Mackey.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to move a resolution to approve annual renewal of alcoholic beverage liquor license.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried.
Next, I would like to move General Ordinance number 2195 on first reading. An ordinance of the town of Westfield amending the demolitions requirements of the town code.
May I have a second?
Second, Contract.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Hapgood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes. This motion is carried.
I would like to move General Ordinance number 2196 on first reading. An ordinance of the town of Westfield amending the code of the town of Westfield, New Jersey regarding street paving.
May I have a second?
I can, Daria.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Hapgood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes. This motion is carried.
I would also like to move General Ordinance number 2197 on first reading. An ordinance to amend certain provisions of the land use ordinance of the town of Westfield.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Hapgood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes. This motion is carried.
Lastly, I would like to move General Ordinance number 2198 on first reading. An ordinance, an ordinance adopting the downtown Westfield scattered site redevelopment plan.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, may I be voting no, as I feel this is, uh, a misuse of the, uh, tax abatement, uh, plan. Also, my concern is that this will lead to, uh, pilots. And my biggest concern is the school district, uh, the school system in Westfield. So I think this will significantly increase density. And I believe, I appreciate you saying downtown development, but, uh, I appreciate smart development. And, uh, my concern is this will be, uh, too dense for, uh, from Westfield. So I'll be voting no.
So Mark, just to clarify, I, I just want to make sure you're clear on what this redevelopment plan is. It doesn't, there's, it doesn't, has it, it's not saying what it is yet. So it's hard to say what it's going to bring. And you wouldn't know that until you actually designate someone to determine what's going to be there. So I just want to be sure you're clear on what it is.
Yeah, no, I, I totally clear. And I just think this is, uh, going down the path of, uh, eventually lead to, uh, pilot programs, which, uh, I'm not in favor of. And, um, my concern is the, uh, Westfield, uh, school system. Um, so that's where I stand right now.
Okay. Uh, 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 please call the roll.
Councilwoman Hapgood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
No.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes. This motion is carried. And I think Councilman Contract and both Councilwoman and Mackey had some updates. Did you have an update, David?
I do. Don, you want to just go ahead since you're?
Yep, I'll go, I'll go next.
You go, Don.
Yeah, go ahead, Don. Okay. Um, I just wanted to, uh, give a big thank you to the thousands of people who came out this weekend to celebrate Adams Fest in a pandemic-friendly fashion. Um, everybody took the weekend with grace and patience and we had a very successful weekend. Starting with Dudley's Drive-In on, uh, Friday night where we showed, uh, the Adams family and Psycho, which celebrated its 60th anniversary. Then we had the, our first ever Trail of Terror at Tamakwess and a Trick or Trail on Sunday. I just wanted to thank the hundreds of volunteers that made this possible. Um, especially a lot of our high school students, our actors, um, were very gracious to come out. The Optimist Club, um, some of my fellow council members, Mayor Brindle for showing up. And, um, as always, the Westfield Police, Fire, EMS and DPW, who did an outstanding job keeping everybody safe. Um, and keeping things moving and giving the residents something to look forward to, uh, during this very strange Halloween season. We've got some great things coming this week. Um, please take advantage of the haunt your house. The painted pumpkins are magnificent. They're in the window at the former Victoria's Secret space. We've got a Zoom lecture Thursday night. Um, a New York State of Mind featuring Adams' New York work. So check out the website. There's still a lot to do. And again, just very grateful for the community for coming together because we really, this is a team effort. We couldn't do it without the droves of support. So a big thank you to everybody.
And to you, Councilwoman, for amazing leadership on this. Really, it's unbelievable. You guys pulled out in the middle of this pandemic and the feedback I've gotten from people has been phenomenal. So thank you.
Thank you.
I would second that. Um, and, uh, having helped out at the trick or treat on Sunday, uh, you could see all the happy kids in the car. So Dawn, wonderful job. Uh, just a couple of quick updates from the Public Works Committee and the Green Team, and then we'll break. So, uh, we had a committee meeting last week. Um, just to reiterate what, uh, what Jim Gilde said about leaf collecting. It's really important for residents to understand if your leaf piles are contaminated with pumpkins and mums and branches and hay, hay bales, they won't get picked up. So please don't do it because we want your leaves to get picked up. Uh, uh, it's really important to follow those basic rules. Um, Jim referenced, uh, we do have a new pumpkin collection program that's going to start on the Monday after Halloween, so November 2nd through November 9th. You can bring your pumpkins to the con- conservation center and they will be turned into fuel. So we're partnering with Waste Management, which was running our food waste program. And you'll be able to bring your pumpkins, whether they're rotted or not, and dump them into a big, uh, container. And then they will go to, uh, to the, uh, Waste Management Plant to be processed and turned into biofuel. Uh, so we're, you know, completing the carbon cycle. Uh, this is the first time we've ever done it. And we're excited by it. And it's another reason not to put your pumpkins in the leaf pile. Uh, you don't need a permit. It's free. And just come to the Conservation Center. It's open seven days a week. Again, Monday, November 2nd through, uh, Sunday, November 9th. Uh, did I get those dates wrong? Uh, Monday, November 2nd, yeah, through Sunday then.
That's, that's right. You got it.
Got it. Okay, cool. Um, the, the Public Works Committee also discussed, um, storm debris pickup. We are still formulating a plan, uh, to, um, to pick up storm debris for storms that are declared emergencies by the governor. We're working on the cost of the plan. Uh, so that it can be incorporated into next year's budget, but I do want residents to know and the rest of the council that we feel strongly that this is the right thing for the town to do, but we need to understand fully the cost of doing it. And that's the next step. Uh, so that's the direction we're heading in and I'll keep everybody apprised of that. Um, the, um, committee also is going to be referring an ordinance, Dawn, to your committee. Not that you need more work, but, uh, we would like the Code Committee review, creating a landscaper registration, uh, similar to what Garwood did. Uh, we would like to understand who's operating in our town, uh, to make sure that we have the ability to contact them. So we require a very nominal registration fee. We know who's, who's taking care of property in Westfield, so we can remind them of the rules. And we could obviously pull the registration if they're not complying with the rules. Uh, we'd also ask that the Code Committee consider doing the same thing for tree, uh, tree, um, outfits that prune trees and take down trees, again, to make sure you follow the rules. As we all know, we've had some issues in this regard. And, you know, again, back to leaf collection. Another thing not to put in your leaf piles, grass, grass clippings. Sadly, you can drive around and already see grass clippings and leaf piles. And that will contaminate your leaf pile and not get picked up. Uh, so, uh, Dawn, um, I believe, um, the town attorney's drafted an ordinance for your committee to review.
Thank you, David.
Yes, you're welcome. Uh, and then two other quick things. Um, next month, the council will be voting to bring back the deer management program. The Public Works Committee strongly recommends this. Uh, we do have a deer overpopulation issue. The program is very successful. It didn't cause any issues last, or earlier this year. And we would recommend bringing that program back that the county runs very well, uh, to Brightwood as well as to the wooded area kind of adjacent to Lambert Mill Road and Tamakwess Park. Uh, unfortunately, uh, we explored, um, running the program in Ward Three in the woods near Grandview, and we're unsuccessful in meeting the county's requirements. Uh, so we're not able to do that. So we'll be recommending those other two locations. Uh, and we'll be voting on that as a council next month, uh, in a few weeks, I think, next meeting. And then lastly, for anybody who's been to Tamakwess Park and noticed the, uh, the dugout holes. Uh, we were going to plant our rain gardens and, uh, we ran into a bit of a drainage issue. So that's why the rain gardens aren't completed and we're trying to work with Rutgers to, to resolve it. Uh, so, um, more to come on that. And then lastly, just another big thank you to the community. I don't know if people are aware, but we had a group of volunteers from Avalon, Avalon Bay Communities, which is coming into Westfield, uh, soon. And they cleaned 1,250 toys that were recycled at the Conservation Center, uh, earlier this week, or sorry, last week. And, uh, it's an early Christmas gift to, uh, thousands of kids around the area who now have, uh, really nice toys that were gently used and not thrown out. So big thank you to the DPW for helping to support it, to Second Chance Toys, which runs the program uh, in partnership with, with town of Westfield. And obviously to the volunteers and everybody who donated or not donated, who brought a toy. Uh, thank you. The bin is open. If you have more toys that you want to get rid of, please bring them to the Conservation Center. Don't throw them away.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, David. I think that's it for the night. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Seconded? All in favor?
Yeah.
Oppose? This motion is carried and this meeting is adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Everybody.
Good night.
Good night. See you, guys.
Bye.
Bye.